Good evening. It's six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call the roll, please.
Here. Here.
Augustinelli.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
Muckel.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Here, all present and accounted for. First item on our agenda is public comment. Any member of the public would like to address the board, please come to the microphone at the podium and give us their name and address. All right. We will close public comment, come back to the board for review and approval of the amended agenda and statements of conflict of interest.
I make a motion that we approve the amended agenda with the mountain bike thing going under correspondence.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Are there any questions or comments?
What mountain bike thing?
It was a tech.
The third page of the amended agenda was a mountain bike subcommittee meeting minutes.
Third page of the amended agenda. I only got three pages. Is the third one it?
Yes, the mountain bike.
Ah, I thought it was part of the eight C. Thank you.
Again, we have a motion and support. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion passes. Next item is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have the minutes from March 28th, 2023. Recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $134,602.53. Gordy Frazier, developers escrow funds, stormwater reviews, utility plan review, oversight and closeout, $6,606.25. General utilities, $7,700. And park funds, DNR trust fund, $865. For a total of $15,171.25. Recommend approval. And you have an MTT update to receive and file.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove something from the consent calendar for discussion? Or any member of the public? Or staff?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support to adopt the consent calendars presented. Any questions or comments? And roll call vote, please.
Augustinelli.
Yes.
Muckel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Duel.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Barshaf.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes. Item four is things removed from the consent calendar. There is nothing. Number five is correspondence. We have the mountain bike subcommittee update for their, for today's meeting. Anybody want to use, discuss that? Or just accept it as correspondence?
I think one of the reasons why they did this, and we had talked about it at the Parks and Rec meeting, is because of them going out for a 501(c). And I think that they wanted just the approval of the township board to say, yes, it's okay to go under the existing 501(c). 501(c)(3), the Northwest Michigan Bike Associations as a fiduciary. So they'll make a formal request. Well, that was, that's, I think, what this was supposed to have been at that point, right? Go ahead, John.
Well, I, I think that was just a discussion at this point. I think really what this was really to identify was that there's been a couple of meetings with the bikers, biking groups, and that there's going to be a meeting onsite next week to actually walk and identify what some of those trails and locations will be closed. But there has been discussion about the idea of potentially creating a 501(c)(3). This was similar to what was done for Hickory Hills. But this would be if there was interest by the biking group to advance some of the improvements at that location as part of, in accordance with the park master plan. That this, so it's just kind of presented as an idea that they're investigating, and we just want to kind of feedback from the board. But I think the most important thing at this juncture is, is that they are working with staff to identify trails to be closed down and restricted. There'll be some that will probably be used at least in the interim until there's actual formal trail development on that portion of the park. And we're talking about the park, that part of the park that's at the very west edge, that's kind of up in the, the higher topography in the park.
Also at that meeting, Chris Remy said that there was a lot of people that wanted to donate already. So I think that's one of the reasons why they were requesting the 501(c). He says there was quite a few that already asked him where he could send money, and they wanted to send it to the township, and he said, no, don't do that.
So they have an existing 501(c)(3).
The, um...
They want to use that. Somebody might just want to check with the attorney and see if there's any.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The Northern Michigan Mountain Bike Association has done, has kind of functioned as a fiduciary. They've done it for other places like Basa and so forth. So they have, and I believe they did it for Hickory as well, for the mountain bike trails over there. So they can function in that role. You know, it's not like they would have to create anything, like a complete organization or anything like that.
Right. So that was, that was their concern, to bring it up to the board first, to see if that would be something that they could start up, so they could start getting donations when they can, with their ask for it. So it'd be something that might have the attorney check with, check with the attorney.
We will do that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Chuck, I have a question. So they're, they're looking for permission to us for them making their own nonprofit?
To use their nonprofit as a fiduciary to collect donations or apply for grants to build out the advanced mountain biking part of the course?
Within our park?
Correct.
Okay. So that's where they're looking for permission, is if they do the fundraiser, it can be used in our park?
Exactly.
For that specific mountain bike area.
Yeah.
Not for any other of the trails or anything like that, for that specific mountain bike area.
So if they go out and sell this, that they're raising nonprofit monies for the trails to improve in our park, they would need permission from us before they go sell that? That's false, and the money's not spent for that.
Great. It's only going to be for the mountain bike.
Yeah. We'll, again, we'll touch base with the attorney and make sure we get all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Any other questions or comments about mountain bikes? We will move on to reports, and our first item is our county commissioners.
All right.
Any other questions or comments about mountain bikes? We will move on to reports, and our first item is our county commissioners.
Good evening, everyone. Brad Jewett, Grand Tauras County Board of Commissioners, District Four.
Lauren Flynn, District Two.
Couple of things to report here on. We had our annual equalization meeting today, and the equalization values in Grand Tauras County as a whole came up, or our toll numbers up to $9.8 billion. Our taxable value is $6.9 billion. And the taxable values went up 9.14% on average throughout the county, and I think Garfield is 12.1, if I remember right. I'm piggybacking on today's equalization meeting. We did have a study session in regards to learning about the budget process, hearing about the budget process. And as many know, we have five new commissioners this year, and I think a lot of it was really...
It was very helpful for us to go through the process and learn the process.
Yeah.
And understand where we need to go and who to ask the questions more, so that was really great.
Yep. I agree. I think even now, I've been there going on five years, but I still learn more about the budget process. But it's really good for what I refer to as like freshman-type commissioners, you know, because there's a lot of, a lot of questions. But no, it was a really good dialogue today, and I look forward to, as we start moving forward in May with the timeline and the budget process on how this unfolds, so. I think I reported last month, we did hire Cole Stoker out of Farmington Hills. I think they're out of Farmington Hills to be our legal counsel. We are no longer using Kit Tholen or the prosecuting attorney's office there. We do have outside counsel for, for our legal counsel there. Last meeting last week there, we did have the discussion on the MPO and the resolution. I did make a motion to table it for the time being because I did see some clerical errors, which I need to follow up with them to make sure we have everything spelled out correctly.
We'll have that back on our agenda in the, in the right timeline, so that feels set.
Yep. I think it might even be on, if it's not on this next week's agenda, it'll be on the agenda at the end of the month and everything. But just some clerical things we wanted to clean up before we pass the resolution for that. Last week, we also had a pavilions report. That was actually very quite lengthy and a lot of good questions, a lot of good answers, a lot of good insight onto the direction they plan on going after having a two-star review here recently and everything. So I, I really look forward to working with them in the future, moving forward and seeing how, how they can improve things there to make it a five-star place again and everything, so. And last that I have on my list is Beta. I know over the course of the last few weeks here, people read things in the paper and whatnot. There, there has been some issues with Beta in regards to how potential board members are appointed and everything, but we are going to be staying down with Leana County. In fact, administration is at the end of this week with Leana County and Beta to see if we can figure out a path forward to, to make this, you know, appiable to the counties that are involved in paying so much in taxes and everything like that. So as that unfolds, I will keep you guys updated on that. That's all I have on my list. I don't know what else Commissioner Flynn has.
You covered that. I will be attending the MAC conference in Lansing at the end of the month. I have put my hat in the ring to serve our arena for, on the Board of Commissioners for the Michigan Association Commissioners. So I'll report back when, after that conference.
Great.
Awesome. Does anybody have any questions or comments for either one of us?
I have a question.
Molly?
So...
Sorry, Molly.
Okay. My question is on the pavilions. It's my understanding that the majority of the problems were with food service. Is that kind of true, or is there more that...
Well, that's how a lot of it was, a lot of it was, in my opinion, was portrayed that way. I do think there's some other issues that they got to work on. One thing they've had a problem with, as many employers have, has been a staffing issue. I mean, there was that one time there, I think it's a little bit better now, but they were down about 150 senas. You know, and I think right now 88 or something like that. It was maybe 98, somewhere in there. So they're making progress there. But I think, you know, having employees that have to put in more time because you're short of employees, that doesn't help situations out and everything. The caregiving field, I know from experiences, stressful as it is, I mean, it's demanding and things like that. And so I think there's multiple issues, but a lot of it does revolve around food. I mean, it, that's where a lot of it starts, and it just trickles down from there.
And they've hired some other company to...
Yeah, they got, yep.
That should be starting April, May, April 15th, was it?
Well, they're going to start taking over in the middle of May here to, for the, they got a 30-day transition period, but I think it's April 14th, maybe. Mid-April sometime, the new food company is supposed to be in, in, in full control.
Good.
And everything. So I, I think Rose Coleman has, has a good plan forward. I think it's just a matter to make sure everything gets implemented and, you know, at least attempt to get it on the right track. And if, if that does not happen, then obviously some other, other avenues are going to have to be looked at on how to move it forward, you know, so.
And as a board, we did ask for Ms. Coleman to be able to report a little more clear on what's happening, rather than just the staffing issues of what's, the surveys that she's getting from residents and that kind of thing, so we should be hearing more information.
Yeah, and a lot of things too with the reporting, we don't hear about it at the county level until after it's printed in the paper.
Yeah.
You know, and so that's one thing I, I think, based on our dialogue, that, that's going to improve in the future, that we will have some conversation prior to everything being in the media, so we can be informed. But, you know, our biggest take on that is we need to be able to answer to our constituents when they're asking questions. And we're like, you know, we just read about it today in the paper too, so, you know, so hopefully, hopefully they follow through with that, you know, more expedient reporting and everything, or updates.
You have a commissioner that sets on that.
Yes, we do. Commissioner Morris.
And she specifically asked to not, to be informed more than, than she had been. Because I think a lot of information was not, not, I wouldn't want to use the word privy, but I think it was done by email with the board members and wasn't like verbally explained to her at meetings, so.
Well, I think a lot of it too, as Commissioner Morris had put to, some of the stuff that she heard about was as soon as it was in the paper. She didn't know anything about it beforehand either, so as a board member, somebody sitting there, they need to be informed.
As a liaison, yeah.
They, they need to be informed right from the get-go instead of waiting 30 or 60 days, or in this case, six months. You know, so, so anyway, you know, we spent two hours, probably two and a quarter hours on that conversation. So there was a lot of good discussion and everything, and I, I think, I think the pavilions as a whole will have, have better communication with us and keep us updated better in the future, but that will yet to be seen, so.
Structurally, the, the pavilions' operation is not under the purview of the county Board of Commissioners. The operations are under the board for the pavilions, that's my understanding.
That's correct.
And the county owns the buildings.
That is correct.
And we appoint two people to, to the DHHS board that oversees.
Yep.
But if you do get a chance to watch it, Commissioner Andrews did come with her lawyer-ness very well with really good questions, and a lot of answers came out. I was very impressed.
I actually joked with her that for a couple hours, I thought I was sitting in a courtroom.
Yeah. Watching Court TV.
But, you know, it was, it was good. It was, it was hard questioning and stuff, so, I mean, definitely all the pavilion staff and the DHHS board that was there, they had, they had to answer, you know. They, they had to think, they had to answer and everything. So I, I do believe, you know, longer term, there's going to be a lot of good come out of it. But I do believe in the short term, they got their work cut out for them to improve things, you know, as, they, they need to improve things.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. I have a question. So why aren't you hiring your attorney? Is that going to cost the taxpayers more money with your...
No, no. Actually, actually, it's going to save us about $50,000 a year, or about $40,000 a year going with outside services. One thing, Kit Tholen took a job in another county.
I knew that, yeah.
And stuff. But in order to keep providing the services that legal counsel does for the Board of Commissioners, they were going to have to hire another attorney anyway. And that would, that would actually cost about 40 grand more than what we farmed it out for, so to say. Cole Stoker's contract is $6,400 a month, and that's, I mean, it is so worded, it's pretty much unlimited for us. There are a couple of fine things in there. Now, the big difference is they will be in person once every quarter or as requested, but they are attending online every single meeting and stuff, so. And usually it's going to be one of two different attorneys that, that attend, and that's what we've seen so far, has been the one or the two and stuff. So it's actually going to save the taxpayers $40,000 right now. Now, could that contract change after a year? It possibly could, but that's stuff that we'll look at. But, but at $6,400 a month, that's less than...
Hiring a new prosecutor.
For paying the prosecutor's office for legal counsel.
Question. I have a follow-up question on that.
Sure.
So at $6,400 a month, that's over $70,000. And an APA comes in at less than that for the county, so how is it saving? They don't come in at $114,000.
Yeah, but no, they figure it's really closer, by the time you figure the benefits or anything like that, it's about $130,000 to $140,000 a year. And I think they based it off what we were paying Kit, not just necessarily something, somebody coming in, and Kit actually has more experience and more time there, so.
Absolutely. That's why I don't agree with that, because of the fact, when you bring a new APA in, they're only going to be making about $90,000 a year, if that. That's with benefits, so...
Well, I mean, if you look at it that way, but we're, I, I think the cost comparison was based on the, the qualifications and the long-term longevity of what Kit was doing when he was with us, or Chris Forsyth prior to that.
And Kit did FOIA and everything, the prosecutor, the prosecutor's office is keeping...
I, I used to work there.
Yeah, some of the duties that Kit did were, are...
Yeah, I understand that. I used to work there, so I totally under, that's why I was kind of iffy about that price.
Now, one, one thing about that is, now that Commissioner Flynn mentioned it though, too, the prosecuting attorney's office wanted to keep the FOIA aspect of it FOIA, so they are still going to be doing any of the FOIA requests and everything, but...
So you brought that into the money too? I mean, for the prosecutor to, I mean, you're still paying a prosecutor to do the FOIAs.
Yeah.
So how can you compare that, I guess?
Well, you know, FOIAs, as you know, they do get compensated some for the quester, whoever requests them.
Right. Very little.
It is very little and stuff like that, but costs figured in and everything. They figured it's going to save us $30,000 to $40,000, at least in this first year, by farming it out, so. I mean, that could be a contradictory number depending on how you look at it and who, who you're paying and stuff like that, so. And I guess it also depends on how, how much work is required of the legal counsel, depending on what we have going on, you know, and stuff. I mean, like the legal counsel down there, they're working on finishing up the, the transfer of Twin Lakes, you know, but that's a big project that they won't have at some point in time either, or something like that, you know. So it just depends, you know, how seasons change there and different topics come up and everything like that, so. I guess, you know, the big thing is that the trial run, we'll have to see how it goes after the first year. Yeah, the, is what we were facing is, for a period of time, we didn't have any legal representation because there was nobody from the prosecutor's office that could come in, and it was usually Kit or Noel, well, Kit's gone and Noel's been busy and stuff, or had, you know, different things going on and couldn't attend our meetings, so. So that's the avenue we chose for now.
Okay.
And, and we'll just have to see how it all plays out, you know, so.
Thanks for clarifying that.
One more question.
Sure.
Did Forsyth do the figuring?
No. Not that I know of. Yeah. But, you know, as, as I've mentioned many times, I, I do believe that we, as a commission, over the last previous years and even now, you know, we've, we've made very wise decisions that are having positive impact on our county employees and our constituents that we serve and everything. And I, I think that's the goal of every commissioner here on the, on the board currently, is to, you know, keep moving this county forward. We're a growing county. We're progressing in many areas and stuff like that, but we want to keep that momentum going.
For sure.
By the decisions that we make and everything, so. You know, and the input that we get from the townships here is valuable to us and everything, and that's what helps us make our decisions, you know. Every one of us, at least several times a week, are talking to several different constituents or more, and, you know, getting input from them, so. But I do honestly believe that we've made really good decisions, and we've set our county in a really good position right now, so.
Thank you. It makes me happy to see the two of you giving a report together.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. We didn't, we didn't even plan that, so.
Yeah.
But anyway, like always too, if anybody has any other questions or comments, our contact information's on the county website. And like I always ask, please try to give us 24 hours to respond, because sometimes we're actually doing our own job for a living too, you know, so. But anyway, feel free to reach out and everything, so. But I am going to head to Blair Township, like always, at the first of the month, so. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Next item is the sheriff's report.
Good evening. Brandon Brinkes with the sheriff's report. Our report is for March, and I'll give you the March statistics first. Garfield made 63 tickets written in the township, seven injury crashes, 61 property damage crashes, 10 OWI arrests, and 64 other arrests, with a total of 68 crashes. And then we also have the quarterly totals, which in Garfield here, we had 214 tickets written total, 20 injury crashes, 199 property damage crashes, 33 OWI arrests, and 178 other criminal arrests. And then March, we were able to fit in, with Mike being on spring break and out of the schools, we were able to fit in a bunch of active assailant classes, so he did six of those during spring break. So he pretty much that whole week, full-time, was doing just CPO stuff. And then also had two fraud awareness presentations that were done, and those are starting to, scheduling a bunch of those, so. And then I'll be doing a press release soon. Our drug take-back day will be on the 22nd of April. The location will be the mall like we usually do. We partner up with a couple of people there. And then Deputy Preston is going to do a pickup at some of the retirement homes too, on a separate day, so he's going to those. But, and then I'll be in training the next two days, all day, and then I leave Sunday night, and I'll be in training all next week. And so I'm there from eight to four, but if anybody, I won't be around here at all next week, but if you have anything or anything comes up, just shoot me an email and I'll get back with you as soon as I can, so. Any questions for me?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Planning Department report.
Reports in the package. Just want to highlight a few things. We have that Hickory Forest, Hickory Meadows zoning, rezoning, that just, I think I highlighted that last month, but just want to let you know that'll probably come to you in June. We also have South 22, which is apartment complex that was approved, and that is going through a process of amending it, reducing the units slightly, but it's going to be merging more with Ridge 45, so that will all essentially be Ridge 45 development, which will ultimately have roughly, the current Ridge 45 at 400 South 22 converted over to Ridge 45 will add in 190 units, so roughly about 590 units when that's all said and done. Also, we have an APUD amendment from Olson's Food Store. That'll be coming to you in July to add some residential, converting some office space in the food store complex there on North Long Lake Road. Some other items we have is the, we put in a grant application, $300,000 grant application to the DNR trust fund to go for a universal accessible trail there at the Commons Natural Area. And then also just wanted to note, we, the planning commission is continuing to meet to talk about master plan items, and they'll be, this month, after April study session, we'll be looking at environment and water quality and, and trails. So that's it.
Any questions for John? I think if I lived right above Olson's, I'd have a lot of those jalapeno cheddar brats. They're the best. Next item is the Parks and Rec report.
Good evening. Sean Keogh with Parks Report. Uh, just, you've obviously got this handout, so I'll just touch on some highlighted things. For Silver Lake, the countertop has been scheduled for April 27th, so that'll be delivered and installed hopefully by then. With regards to the commons, as we talked about, or you guys talked about earlier, the subcommittee meetings have been going well, and I can touch on a few of those things in a minute here. We did a walkthrough with planning to identify the all-accessible trail and kind of marked out a, a spot for that along North Long Lake Road, then looping back towards Greenspire there, so that's starting to take shape. And then we identified a vault in that area that has a lot of, not a lot, but probably three or four pump heads in there that was part of the old hospital complex where they were taking water from across the street for, I guess, cattle and farming activities back there. But the lid on the vault needs some attention because you could open it up essentially, climb down in there. So there's no water or anything in there right now. It's just a vault with like pump heads in there. But we're going to secure that here in a short time and get that sealed off till we decide what we want to do with it and how it's going to affect any new trail, if we should crush it or fill it in, or cap it off and call it good, or what, so. So we're looking into that. With regards to River East, the irrigation has started on the dog park. Lautner's has been down there the last few days, and they're really taking advantage of the weather, and that's going really well. Walton's have, they took a bunch of topsoil in there, so it's really taking shape down there. Um, Walton's have, they took a bunch of topsoil in there, so it's really taking shape down there. Uh, we got all the five-hundred cages cut for the, for the trees, so those are ready to go. Uh, Bourbon River Valley, the, uh, pickleball nets and stuff are in. There was a, uh, there's been a few complaints on the parking striping and the, uh, potholes with the ro, road, uh, degrading there along the river as usual type thing. So I have emailed Andrew from the Y advising him those things need to be repaired, and then he responded by saying that he had had, uh, I think Elmer's out there to do an estimate on it, and then he was going to email John with the estimate, looking for some financial help from us, so just be aware that that is out there. And we're discussing with Chuck where, what is ours and what is theirs and what is under the Olson grant and, and, or from the Olson Foundation versus what is under the, the N R grant of property that's down there and responsibility as to where the, or where those responsibilities lie. Um, Miller Creek, Derek and I were there today, uh, removed, um, almost two homeless camps in there and filled our first dumpster of the year with all sorts of fun stuff that you can imagine. So that season obviously has started, so. Buffalo Ridge Trail, the, uh, tree planting is, I just got an email scheduled for May second, so hopefully that'll take, um, take place without any problems and we'll be good to go there. And then, uh, under additional information, we discussed it at the Parks Commission Board meeting, uh, last week, but, um, I will have something a little bit more formal for them at the next meeting, and then they can decide if they want to recommend it to the board for, uh, some form of fee structure for events that, uh, are not pavilion-related or are not, um, like, long-term contracts like we have with the, the, our agreements that we have with, like, the rugby team and so forth. These would be just one-day events, um, or weekend events per se, um, that we have gotten six or seven requests already this year, and in my time, we, uh, we didn't see any last year, so it's foot races, National Night Out type things, um, things that are gonna take up a bigger portion of the parks and, you know, for a, for a duration, so. That will be coming, and you can look at it when, uh, if the Parks Committee decides they want to move that along. Uh, the mountain bike subcommittee, I don't know if you really want me to touch on this at all, the fundraising we can skip because you already talked about that. The, uh, onsite visit that we did have with, with the, uh, mountain bike committee seemed like it went really well. They are, they are, seem to be on board with closing some trails that have conflicts and, uh, and erosion issues and, you know, and putting in some temporary signage in and some maintenance to keep those trails safe and active, you know, until the formal plan is in place, and, and we have, uh, you know, more formal trail building going on with regards to that, so it seems like it's going well. Um, I think that is about it.
Any questions for Sean?
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next is the clerks' report.
Well, um, our audit started this week.
Oh, fun.
It's been fun, it's gotten well so far. Uh, we're just real busy with it, and Betty and I are working with BSNA, uh, to meet the requirements for the new uniform chart of accounts. So the state requires us to, um, change several charts of accounts and then account for expenditures, like the medical and, and everything under each department, what was actually costing each department, so it's gonna be a different look once we're done with it. We're keeping the same dollar amounts, but they're gonna be in a different area, so. Uh, but it is required that it gets done, this is the final year we need to get it done. So it is, it's getting done. We're working, um, working with Trina, the auditor, to make sure I have all my charts, accounts, departments, where they're supposed to be, and. It's gonna be a lot of work, but we're getting it done. Any questions on my written report?
I got an email from the auditor, I know Air Balance probably did too.
Everybody.
Yeah. Filled it out and said our clerk does a good job, keeps us informed, no issues that I have.
There we go again, there's my email, I didn't get one.
The auditor sent them to everyone.
Well, they've been.
I wonder they might have had your old email.
They may have had my old email address.
So I will, um, confirm with them what email they use tomorrow and make sure you get an email.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, no, I didn't get one, thank you.
All right. Other questions for Laney? Uh, Supervisor's report, uh, spent a little over two weeks out of the country.
So you don't have one? Just wanted to let you know, last meeting was only twenty-five minutes, so.
It was one topic.
Well, I'm still, I'm telling you.
Uh-huh. Cause I, I heard somebody was really fast with the hammer.
That's right.
Um, just, yeah, spent a lot of time the last two days answering emails and voicemails and, um, trying to get over my jet lag, but.
We don't feel sorry for you. Sorry.
It was worth it, trust me. So on that note, we will move on to unfinished business, and we have no unfinished business because Denise took care of it all last two weeks. And new business, uh, number one is an MPO presentation by Networks Northwest in consideration of Resolution twenty-two-three dash eleven dash T to establish an intermunicipality committee for the purposes of transportation planning. Hello, Matt.
Hello. Hello, hello, everyone. Uh, I am not Rob Carson, as you can see. I am Matthew Cook, I'm one of the community planners at Networks Northwest, and, um, I've, I've dabbled a little bit in TTC I, I did the, uh, Northwest Michigan Freight Plan, uh, when I first started, so I'm a little bit aware of what's going on. Um, and then with, uh, Hannah leaving, um, I'm kind of filling in until we get someone else in and get them transitioned and trained up. Um, so the very first thing, uh, the TTC I, it's been kind of going on for a little bit now. Um, started in nineteen eighty-eight, uh, looking at bypass around Traverse City. MDOT eventually proposed, um, uh, with the thought that we would hit the population threshold that obviously took a couple censuses to get, and we got it in this twenty-twenty census. Um, uh, the population was fifty-six thousand eight-hundred-ninety, and so we, we finally hit it. Um, it's my understanding in twenty-ten, we were very close, uh, but not quite. So what is a metropolitan planning organization? It's a, uh, transportation policy-making and planning body designated to carry out metropolitan planning process. It's made up of representatives from the local governments that are within the metropolitan area, uh, provides a forum for the decision-making, which involves the stakeholders and the public as well. Um, and ensures that the federal spending is done through the three-C process, which is comprehensive, cooperative, and continuing. Uh, so if you didn't, I'm, I feel like most people have probably seen the map, uh, hopefully at some point. So this is the map, the shaded in area is the MPO boundaries. Um, and so the MPA, this is the MDOT recommended MPA boundary, so that is the metropolitan planning area. Um, that's determined between the MPO and the governor, and, um, it has to encompass the, um, the MPO area, so you can see that it has townships and everything. Um, and, let's see. All right, all right. And there are thirteen, uh, MPOs existing, so it will be, come the fourteenth, as you can see, they're all mostly downstate, depending on where you put that downstate line. Um, this is the typical structure of an MPO. Um, the policy board, uh, sits over the technical committee, the citizens advisory committee, and any other, um, standing or ad hoc committees, so I would probably think like the Hahnman, Hartman Bridge would become an ad hoc committee, would be a guess, um, but all that to be determined. And so the policy committee, that consists of local elected officials, um, officials of public agencies that administer, operate major modes of transportation, so BETA, and other appropriate state officials. Um, the policy committee determines their own representation in decision-making procedures, and the executive committee handles the agendas and routine matters. The planning or technical committee is an advisory board to the MPO, uh, for transportation issues. It oversees the technical work and develop, develops recommendations on pro, projects and programs for board consideration. Um, so we, we have an existing technical committee, that's where we did the, uh, freight plan through, and obviously we have the board itself, so we kind of have that structure already, um, in place for what we've been working on towards this. So some of the functions for the MPO include the establishment of a fair and impartial setting, evaluating transportation alternatives, um, developing, updating, and approving various plans, and involving the public, uh, both all residents and, and key groups. Uh, so some of these quick plans, just to go over them real quick. The long-range transportation plan, that focuses on twenty years out, it's updated every five years. Um, it'll look at future goals, strategies, projects, um, the projected future demands, and also goes through some of the, uh, asset management, safety aspects. Uh, the transportation improvement program is also developed by the MPO, and this one is approved by the MPO and the governor. This covers projects for four years, it's updated annually. Um, and, uh, the next one, the Unified Planning Work Program, that is also developed and approved by the MPO. This is a statement of work that identifies the planning priorities and activities that are carried out within that planning area. Uh, describes the work and products that would be performed, the costs, all that good stuff. That one also updated annually. So some of the funding implications currently, uh, the urban area, we receive three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars in, um, surface transportation program, small urban program dollars. Uh, that would be replaced, as well as the twenty-three thousand dollars in SPR funds, um, which is, uh, the state, state, oh, state or pro, or special, I don't remember now, projects and research funds. So after the MPO is, receives its designation, uh, those funds will be replaced with a million dollars in STP small MPO funds, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand in consolidated planning grant funds, and a hundred-and-twenty thousand, um, in carbon reduction funds, uh, those, I should say, are estimates. Um, we'll get the final numbers as the designation comes. And, um, the funding that the counties get for, um, rural task force will not, it's not affected by this, so the counties will still get that, those funds. Uh, here's the kind of MPO timeline that we've been following, so the, the big thing was obviously waiting to get the census designation to tell us if we were, if we were gonna be able to go down this path or not. Um, we've got, I'd say, we're about on the fifth slash sixth up right now, so we're working on getting the agreements to form the MPO, um, which ultimately will get us putting into, uh, the request for MPO designation, which is done by the governor. We have to have that submitted by, I think, September first. Um, and so then, once that gets started, uh, the governor ideally approves it. Um, then, once FHWA, FTA, they get, they're, they recognize this as an MPO, then we'll get the inter-agency agreement signed, and I think that's kind of when the funding will really start coming in, and that's when we'll have to do a little bit more planning work, but that's in the future after we get the designation. Uh, so just some of the stuff that we're working on to get that designation is the MPO name. Um, I was told that, at the recent meeting, they did, the board confirmed that, um, it's gonna be TTC I moving forward with the MPO. Um, and so we're working on, obviously, the MPA boundary, which will be fully determined when we get whoever will be, um, a part of the MPA boundary, so. That's, Rob's doing Long Lake tonight, um, so we're getting everyone on board if they would like to be on board. Um, and so there's still some stuff to work on, obviously, the organizational structure. Um, then we're working on the intergovernmental agreements. Uh, and then just to let you guys know, so MDOT, some of the stuff that they'll do, providing a lot of guidance to us, which I think they've, they've been doing, um, aiding us in the, in the, uh, planning process. They also act as the primary point of contact. Uh, they're also the liaison between the MPO and, uh, the federal, uh, organizations. They'll participate in our technical and policy committee meetings, and they also, uh, review all the required documents. And, um, I will take any questions and answer them the best I can, and if I can't, I will get you an answer.
Molly.
Um, can you explain to me, is, uh, this TTC I gonna be handled through Networks North? Or does it have its own staff and who's paying for that?
Yep, so it is my understanding that that's what's being looked at, is that it would be housed within Networks Northwest. It's my understanding that it cannot be housed with road commissions. Um, so that's kind of what I have on that. Um, I was told that there would be, so currently, and I think Chuck, you tell me if I'm wrong, I think I was told that currently townships are paying about two-thousand dollars in dues for TTC I.
Bigger townships pay more.
Okay, perfect, good to know. Uh, so, um, there will be, there's, the local commitment is eighteen-point-one-five percent of that coordinated grant amount, which was, um, which was approximated at, I think, like, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, I think is what I said. Um, so it's about forty thousand that would be divided up between the entities that are a part of, a part of the.
And the road commissions pay more, the city pays more because they are Act forty-five recipients, so it's a, but the townships are gonna be responsible for a portion.
Okay, so it's, you'll, you'll be meeting at Networks North? It's all Networks North are the organization that's really doing it, just with the advisory committee of local units?
Yeah, Networks North will staff the MPO.
Yeah, they will staff it, but that staff would be under the board, I believe.
Correct.
Okay.
Under the MPO board, I'm sorry, not under Networks Northwest's board, under the MPO board.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions for Matt? So the, um, there was consideration of passing a resolution, and the resolution does not tie us or commit us to spending any money.
Okay.
It is just the resolution to form the organization, and we're in favor of it. I don't know what the counties, do you have any idea what Brad was talking about that he had some?
No, I was hoping to maybe find out, because I watched the video, and I seen, I heard something about a semi-colon, and then I think Brad maybe said something about the organizations that we're in, but, um, when I talked to Rob, he was at, Rob said that, well, we can't put in when we don't know who's, so. I was gonna let Brad and Rob figure that out.
Okay. Okay.
And they did table it to their, their, uh, April nineteen, eighteenth or nineteenth, something like that. Okay, yes, whatever that is. Um, but yeah, it was my understanding, it was all mostly clear call.
Do you would like to entertain a motion?
I would.
I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-two-three dash eleven dash T to establish an intermunicipality committees for purposes of transportation planning.
In the Traverse City-Garfield study area?
In the, okay, you can add that too.
Or.
We have a motion by Spuckle and support by Barshif, is that right? Any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Spuckle.
Yes.
Barshif.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Stuhl.
Yes.
Acustinelli.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes. And the motion passes, resolution is adopted. Thank you, Matt. The next item on our agenda is consideration of Resolution twenty-two-three dash ten dash T regarding tax exemption and payment in lieu of taxes per Hammond Road Apartments. Um, we changed the one for the flats because the language was not connected properly. So es- essentially, we're doing the same thing for the. So essentially, we're doing the same thing for the project right next door, so that their documents will be smiled on by the state. If, anybody have any questions on that?
This, is this the, where's this located? I'm confused on where this is at.
This is between the gas station on Garfield and Hammond and the Beta Project.
It's not built yet?
No.
Okay, that's why I'm not figuring this out.
Yep, we did, we did grant them a pilot, it's for workforce housing.
Okay.
And...
I was picturing the ones across the, to the east of the intersection. I'm like, they're going to redo all that into this?
No, that's, that's going to be all part of the ridges.
Okay, all right, now I'm aware, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a little bit of discussion on these pilot programs. We had some discussion at planning, and I know that we have, this board has also talked about how many of these, and how we're going to set the rules for these, and, you know, who, at some point, are we just going to continue to approve them as they come in, and take them on a case-by-case basis? But then, what are the rules for the ones who get them and don't get them? And I know, we wanted to set a percentage of our total housing. Have we done that, are we going to put that into some kind of a document so that we have something to follow, or we're just going to keep going?
I think it's, the board, both boards have stated their wishes that, essentially, they felt we have arrived at where we want to be in terms of projects, pilot projects and apartment complexes, that single-family homes are of a higher priority from this point on. Now, both of these were approved.
Right.
Prior to that, or during that discussion, that brought about the discussion. But at this point, I think, unless it is, you know, something pretty spectacular or part of a larger plan, I think we're all in.
Well, so are you saying we are no longer going to do them? I feel more comfortable having some, something to back that up. I'm not sure we want to stop.
Right.
But if we had something where we determine that 15% of our housing in Garfield Township can be this, this, and this, this is how many we have out there, and, you know, this is how many years are left on them, and when another one becomes available, I mean, much like a liquor license, when one becomes available, then we'll consider. Is that something that this board wants to codify in some way, or just?
I think we could do that, yeah, and I don't have...
Touching on what she's saying, if, it'd probably be John and our assessing department to do it, but if we could have a running sheet that shows, these are single-family homes, these are apartments, these are pilot houses, and have percentages, as the years go on, each year, the building department, everybody's aware of what's being added, so we can keep that tally going. And if we come up with a percentage, like we're thinking, or Molly mentioned, we would know where we're at based on where we're growing. Does that make sense? Kind of like a spreadsheet that just keeps showing numbers, showing numbers. And then, when we get something like this submitted, we get that spreadsheet attached that shows what would, how would this impact that percentage?
Yeah, we've provided that spreadsheet in the past, we can do that again.
Yeah, if we, well, maybe with every pilot submission, we have that spreadsheet attached to the back, so we know the impact of this request.
We might not see it for a while, then.
It's going to take a while to get it, I think, to get the numbers now.
No, we've got them, we've got them already, in the system.
Okay.
I have a question. So let's say we do this, and then there's basically no pilot program available right now, okay? If we do the percentage. However, we have a developer that comes in that wants to, let's say, the Sam's property, by the Sam's, that wants to do all single-family.
Right.
Is that something that we can then look at? Or are we going to say, no, you can't do it, because we're done with pilot programs?
Well, we can do whatever we choose.
Okay, well, I'm just concerned about that, because I know we want some more single-family.
Right.
But if this person comes in and says, I want to do this, this is a single-family, but I want a pilot, well, we can't give it to you, because we're at a percentage limit already, but yet, we as a board want to see more single families. That's where my, you know...
Yeah, both the planning commission and the town board have stated that.
Okay, yeah, but I'm just saying, that I'm just saying that, you know, if we do it this way, and they're only going to have 15%, we're at the 15%, let's just say, right now, okay?
Did I mention our community survey also said that? So it's pretty much unanimous.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, you know, if we're already there, and then this person comes in, is that something that we could look at, rather than say, no, you can't have one, because we're already at the max for pilots?
We've never done a pilot for single-family individual houses, as far as I know.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that that's...
It's usually been the big buildings, and it, and, you know, when we look at those numbers, sometimes we just look at the number of pilots that we have, not the number of actual units that are inside that pilot. So we should be looking at the whole picture, so we know...
When we have that 15%, that's the number of occupancies.
Yeah.
Like, of all of the occupancies in the township, roughly 15% of them are pilots.
Right.
When you say occupancies, are you talking dwellings?
Right.
Okay, not people.
Individuals.
No.
Not people, dwellings, actual livable dwellings.
Whether it's an apartment, or a condo, or a mansion.
Place where people stay.
Yeah, one is one.
Would a duplex come under that, or no?
A duplex would be two occupancies.
Okay.
And typically, they're, you know, either rentals, or...
Ones living on one side and renting the other side, okay.
But that's, you know, we have, we have a lot of duplexes in the township.
Which is getting closer to single-family.
Right, it really is.
We do those pilots, because they need to have board approval in order to be able to get state funding.
Right.
Those kinds of things.
No, I understand that. Thank you for answering my question.
My pleasure.
It just seems in prior conversations this board has had, that we didn't want to paint ourselves into a certain number or a percentage, and we want to do it case by case.
Correct.
So that's what I kind of remember from six months ago.
Yep, and we have had developers approach us about putting in new apartment complexes. And we told them that they could certainly apply, but the board, our public, and the commission have all stated that that was not the direction we wanted to go. And they thanked us for our time and left. But it is, we have, at this point, we still have local control.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you just need a motion? I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-10-T, designated the Mishta supporting housing component of a proposed approximately 80-unit multifamily housing development to be tentatively known as Hammond Road Apartments, an affordable housing community located near the northwest intersection, West Hammond and Garfield Roads. Traverse City, Michigan 48686, Garfield Township, Michigan, as a qualified project under the Charter Township of Garfield's amended and restated ordinance number 18. Support.
We have a motion by Barshew and support by Dool. Are there any other questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Horn?
Last but not least, under new business, consideration of requests for engineering services from Grand Traverse Road Commission for proposed Ridgeview Court road improvements. And we have, we have enough signatures and literally on a special assessment district petition to, to go ahead and, I'm just asking the board for permission to write a check for $1,000 to the road commission to get the estimate.
So I take it there's 20 residences on the road? And 13 are valid signatures, so it's well over 50%?
Yes.
Two of the signatures were not valid?
Correct.
Which two were not valid?
Scott Dunn and Casey Wolf were not title holders.
Oh, they're not title holders, yeah.
So I just, okay, that road needs it. I'll make a motion that Chuck approves paying the check.
$1,000 bucks.
For $1,000 for engineering costs for the improvements of Ridgeview badly needed subdivision road.
Support.
Motion by Dool and support by Agustinelli. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I am abstaining.
You're spending money, don't you have to?
You have to, you can vote.
I can vote, then I vote yes.
We have unanimous vote.
Thank you.
That brings us back to public comment.
Brad Olson with the Olson Foundation in regards to the property south of town, Meadow Lane and Runny, Meadow Lane and Runny School Road. I had a board meeting with the foundation this morning, minimal amount of people, being people on vacation, but they kept on asking me questions in regards to where we are at with the water. I had no answers. We have gotten to the point where we've had multiple sales on the property and multiple interests in sales of the property. One being Cherry Land Electric, it's 40 acres off of the southwest corner, Runny School Road. Portion of that is under the buy-sell agreement contract is development of infrastructure for the road and water, and all other infrastructure. I talked with Chuck Corn the other day, I found out Fox Motors just bought the 10 acres from Camping World. I have multiple people talk and ask me about the 40 acres for the high-density housing, give or take a couple, in the woods there. And I just have told them, I can't give you anything, because I have no infrastructure, I have no water. I'm trying to get to the point where I need to move forward with all these people and my board, and give them answers. We've talked to Blair, Blair has gone forward and said that they'd work with us. Talked to Chuck, and we've talked about McCray Hill and moving water up. I don't know if there's a special committee, what, that needs to get the water up there, but I just need guidance from you as a board, so I can give it to my board, and find out where we can go, what we need to do, or if we can. There is multiple demand. I've spoken with Warren Call, he has done some side work, contracted work for light industrial, there's a huge demand for it, but I can't give it to it. I have no infrastructure. I'm willing, I've got millions of dollars tied up and ready to put the road in, but I can't, because I have no water. I just, I'm not going to do it. I can't answer to my board. I will do it, if I can get water. You got any points?
Identifying Jim Schmuckel, 762 Windmill Lane. I'm on the team with Olsons in this development, this is 180 acres, which is the largest commercial parcel left in the township. And if you look at this, it's been left all, I think something, it got short-sighted later. Actually, Olsons gave them, the township, an acre land in one corner of the property several years ago for anticipated water tower, which never happened. The water is about a half a mile short, and we have not been able to budge any at all to get it to move toward this project. And if you look at, what's sort of unusual about this situation is that the township has worked with Long Lake Township and got them water. There's been encouragement recently in the ticker news about adding municipal utilities on the east side of town. And we just can't figure out why this is such a centerpiece for the whole township. And there's a lot of high-grade people, businesses, that would like to locate there. So it's such a natural, the impulse of the return for the township, if they were willing to provide water, municipal water to this site, would be substantial and would not be an economic burden on them over a period of time. So, but we have, I started working on this over four years ago, and we've got, we're actually at zero. We've got no progress whatsoever. I mean, there's been, there's been overtures made, but no action. So what we're asking is that somehow the town board and the administrative people would team together and figure out what kind of scenarios they could offer to get water there as soon as possible. And another situation, what you see, and this has just happened, these things are all real and all happening. Look at what happened to U-Haul right now. I don't know how many of yous noticed the water tower they have there? So they went ahead and spent, who knows, thousands and thousands of dollars on a water tower. That money could have, had this water been available sooner, they would have chipped in, who knows, $100,000 or something, that they wouldn't have this water tower. So what are they going to do if municipal water comes by and now it's too late? The tower's already there. So this is the other thing that could well happen with some of the people that we have that want to come on this property. If you don't come up with water for this project, we're going to have a royal mess out there for, you know, just a Mickey Mouse situation, if you want to say, from a development standpoint of view. So anyway, yeah, I'm a little bit upset about it, because it's been a lot of hours and a lot of time on it. And we've had meetings, but we've got no place. So I'm asking, my comment is, is I'd like to see the township visualize really what's happening, what's happening there right now, and what the township wants to see happen from their perspective with the municipal utilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Any other business to come before the board tonight? Steve?
So, in response to the public comment, is there a way we can get them on the agenda to discuss what we can do? Because I think, don't we have a pressure?
Yeah, we've had, we've had discussions about this in the past.
Well, last I knew, though, we were getting water from Blair. And now, I guess...
Blair's indicated that they would be able to provide very little water for a very short time. They need to put in two more wells and two more, it's, they've got growth going on as well.
So I guess...
So you'd have, you'd end up spending money twice to get it done there. It doesn't make sense. So this would be the, essentially, the first time that we subsidize a development with water and sewer. And I'm, I'm leaning in the direction of doing that, but I'm trying to do it in a way that's respectful to everybody who owns the water system. The water system is entirely paid for by ratepayers. It's not, with the exception of the segment that just went into Long Lake, which was entirely paid for by the state and county ARPA funds.
Right, right.
None of that came from our ratepayers.
But if we can get that over the hill, it opens up both sides of the highway. It opens up classic motorsport sides, it opens up the Olson sides, it opens up Meadow Lane, should their well ever go out and they wanted to hook into it.
Potentially. It's going to be hard to get the blue, the other side of the street to hook up.
And I know that we've been talking about, we're short on light industrial in our township and other places, and it would be a hard call or sell...
and it would be a hard call or sell for Brad and them to come in and ask for a request of a rezoning, when that rezoning is no good, because you can't get the businesses to go in there to do anything without having their own holding tanks for fire suppression. So, I guess what I'm asking is, can we get the information we've got with our engineer and have it on the agenda to discuss what and where we are to try to do that? I mean, I know we have ARPA money, but it's gotta be for the community, and I understand what you're saying, but it would've, it's too bad the county ARPA monies weren't available to help them out like it did other entities in the township. It would've been a great thing, because it would've opened up a boatload of properties to the south. And for whatever reason, the board at that time put an in-ground tank at the top of McCray Hill.
No, almost to the top.
Well, if, if it would've been a raised tank, it could've maybe had enough pressure to go south, but it killed the south.
Or if it had been a little farther up the road.
Yeah, or if it was down my road farther, it could jump across.
And then they gave the property away.
Yeah.
That's the, Olson's, the Olson's donated property for a tower, and the old board gave that property to Metro.
What?
They gave the property to Metro.
Our one acre is owned by Metro?
It was.
But it's owned by us now?
Yeah, when we put the fire station in at Silver Lake...
At twelve.
We, as part of the deal, we, we brought that land back so that we could have it.
Ah, so can we get it on a future agenda to try to figure out what, if anything, we can do to help these guys? Because, man, they're, they're all dead in the water, the whole thing out there.
Yeah, Claude?
Um, is a special assessment not appropriate for this kinda thing? Like, could you somehow, could we pay for it upfront and then ask these people to hook up, pay us back? Is that an option for this, or...
Yeah, there's a, it's foot-frontage, meaning people pay for that. If someone buys a lot, they pay for the pipe that's there. And the benefits when they attach. So that, that can be done, yes.
Is a special assessment like the road one, where it's fifty-one percent of them sit on? It's not?
We would pay for the whole thing, and then when anybody hook, does anything...
Then you pay, oh, then, okay, I get it, okay.
Then we get paid back.
Okay.
And we're, we're working through it. I mean, as I said, we, we now have the the pressure district pump that is near West Senior High, that for years pressurized that area. There was no tower. It was just a pump that ran constantly to keep it pressurized. And since we put up the new tower off Cedar Run, we don't need that anymore, so we can remove that and bring it to the top of the hill. It's gonna be roughly one point two, one point three million dollars to get there, just to get to the corner of the Olson property. That is, there's nobody there who's gonna pay. The, the, whatever they're called, the Meadow Lane Park has, is not interested in bringing their system up to the standards that we could hook public water to it. So it's...
Is that pump big enough? As Jennifer said, is it big enough to push that area, that pump?
We're gonna need a new pump. Oh, to, in terms of the pressure district? Yeah, that's fine.
That will work, that will pressure, okay.
And then, and then as it develops, it would make sense at some point to put a tower up. And as I said, we're moving in that direction. I don't, I, it's uncharted waters for us, essentially, because we have a lot of area in between the current tank and the Olson property that there's nobody who's gonna...
But the pump would suffice.
But once we get there...
But it's just putting in over a million dollars worth of pipe to get there, you're gonna have to have a pump down on McCray Hill to push the water up there, another pump. So there's, there's gonna be some expenses.
But once we get there, it opens up, 'cause there's not water on the east side of the highway, is there?
No.
So it opens up all of that?
To potentially hooking up.
No, I know, and I get that, I get that, but it's there.
A lot of people have a well they are not going to hook up. You know, they're not gonna go to the expense.
How does, like, Van Dries and them, how are they, do they, are they not fire-suppressioned? With the, the furniture store out there?
Yeah.
Are they, how are they fire-suppressioning their building? I mean...
Sure.
Jim, you have to come up to the mic, Jim.
This goes a long ways back. I was involved in that when I sold it to them, and they used my conference room, and I got educated by people from California and everything else on how that whole project got laid out. So I learn every day. So I, as you might say, I don't know everything, 'cause I learned something tomorrow. But anyway, they, they, they laid these raceways out, it's what they call them, if you happen to walk in there. And then these raceways, they designed it so then they went through a door, and those are fire doors. So they do not have fire suppression. There was no consideration for fire suppression back there. So anyway, that's, it's all masonry building, so they met, met the fire code system by, by design.
Thank you.
Magnetic releasers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Molly?
Well, I'm agreeing with Steve. This is a boon to us for economic development, and we're going to realize the taxes from that piece of property. And it's worth an investment from us, and it may not be all of us. I mean, we may have to ask for some help from the people that are gonna buy into this project up there to cover that, and, and that's the deal that somebody's gotta make. And I don't know, I mean, this board can't make that deal. So, but I, if, I think it's important enough to get that land moving. It's been sitting there, and they have been in for a long time talking about how we're gonna get this done and what we're gonna do. And if everybody's in agreement that we need to do it, let's try to figure out a way to do it.
Yeah.
I, I agree with Steve and Molly, too. We need to figure out a way to do it.
We would, we would like to figure out a way to do it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just worried, like you said, this is the first time we'll be subsidizing a private development. Does that set us up in the future to have to be subsidizing other projects? How do you say, "This one's so important that it's okay to do it for," and then say no to other people in the future? I'm just worried about the liability with that, and that we've never done it in the past for other developments? That's my concern, I'm sure everyone's, but obviously, we want...
And I, and I, and I would suggest at some point that we look at using some ARPA funds to do it.
Yeah.
At least a portion of it.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
Because it's a benefit in the long run to the entire community.
Yeah, it's gonna be a benefit to the township tax-wise later on down the line.
Yeah.
You know, but right now, it's not.
Tax money's not really money.
I know.
It's just pretend.
Employment for the township, there's, there are other advantages to having things moving up there.
Yeah.
And I don't know that I look at it so much for helping a private entity as much as getting water to a district of our township that doesn't have it and can't grow, is how I look at it. And I think if we sat down, whatever committee sat down with the Olsons or the Olsons Foundation, they've got funds already available from Cherryland. Fox might front funds, pay ahead of time for their fees. So they might have funds available, if those two sources that they have there now, to help get the water to there. But I, that's what I look at. It, it's a, it's a dead zone in our township that should've, by all rights, been able to get water easy, but it can't.
It, it's a bit of a mystery.
Yeah, and I'm not blaming anybody, it's just...
Why it was changed to commercial, but then a water tank was built below it.
Yeah.
In the ground below it, yeah, I don't know that, you know, but maybe they didn't want to see a tank. Maybe that was the issue back then, is there was no, nobody wanted visible tanks. I don't know.
Yeah.
But...
Yeah.
So this is something we will look into?
Absolutely. We'll get all the, I mean, Jennifer and I have spent a lot of time trying to piece this together, so it makes sense financially. Doesn't penalize the current ratepayers, you know?
Right.
So, we'll, we'll bring what we have, and we can have that discussion.
I like the idea of using the ARPA money for it, 'cause originally, when they made the rules, which you don't have to follow anymore, they said water, sewer, infrastructure was an okay use. And I think it does benefit the whole community, and so I, I think, I like that.
I do, too.
I like that, and then maybe we could get some matching money from interested parties to go along with our ARPA money or something like that. I think that'd be a good use for the ARPA.
Yep, I do, too.
Benefits the whole community.
Mr. Barshew?
I support the concept. I, I remember talking months and months ago that if we did this, it could benefit people on East Silver Lake Road, residences along Runny School Road. And at the point, at the time, that was my thought process, why can't we, before thinking, and support this, and there is growth, you know, the taxpayers are going to benefit. And the concept was, is, well, we can't fund private projects.
Yeah.
But yet, the, you know, the township residents benefit. They have places where they can go and spend money and, you know, buy things and stuff like that, so it's just different thinking. And I'm all for it.
Yeah, again...
You know, just find a way of doing it.
Taxpayers are one thing, ratepayers are another. Ratepayers are the people who have paid their water and sewer benefit fees. They've paid their fees to put, I mean, the builders of subdivisions pay to put those pipes in the ground. Everybody else has done that. That's just the normal process. We've just got a big gap by coming up from basically Silver Drive to Silver Road?
Silver Pines.
Silver Pines. Silver Pines up to the Olson property is the, the issue. It's that...
From the tank, right?
No, it's gotta come, the pump...
Is the cement building down below?
The pump is below the tank.
Is that the building down below on Silver, on Silver Pines? That concrete building is the...
That's the...
That's where it's gotta come from?
Right.
That's not the one that, does that pump to fill the tank?
Yes.
But that can't, the water can't come from the tank?
It does.
No, the water for us going south can't come from the tank? It has to come from the pump?
Correct.
Oh.
It's a little more distance.
That adds a couple more hundred feet.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it is something we'd like to do. It really is. And I'm, and I'd be happy to bring everything that Jennifer and I have done in the past and looked at, and we can have that discussion in our next meeting.
That would be awesome.
Is it the DPW ward that needs to be satisfied that the money is going to be coming in to, in fees to cover the cost? Is, is that...
No, that's our auditors. They get a little funny about that.
But if we use ARPA money, the auditors would recognize that the funds were spent correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, you can use, you can use ARPA money for anything. It's pretty much open now.
Okay.
To whatever our government can provide as a service.
The lost revenue clause.
Yeah, the lost revenue, so the auditors wouldn't, wouldn't mind if we used it.
And I've said in the past, this is something we might wanna look at and might wanna figure out how to do it. But again, I wanna do it in a way that's respectful to everybody. Ratepayers, taxpayers. I, you know, personally, am very proud to have the Olson family as part of our community. They have, they donated the land where the old YMCA is. I mean, if you drive around northern Michigan in any project, there's a sign there that lists donors, and they're always there. So they've, they've done a lot.
Well, I look forward to having something at next meeting, then.
All right. We will do it.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Any other business to come before the board today?
No, sir. How was your trip? Where did you go?
We're on a journ first.
We're on a journ first. Just a quick question.
Getting us a journ.